I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the public, to the citizens, to my nation and my people. The visible, the clear team, just. Vote.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner.
Introduction of media. Any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out speaker form and turn it into recorder. Forms are available on the signing table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. For Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry. You will need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of the screen. Image of a hand. Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time limit at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the mic itself. Any public comment? Consent agenda. Not a motion for December 20th, 2022 meeting minutes. Motion to approve. I'm sorry. Motion and a second in the discussion. Thank you. Vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, under council business, both of our mayor and captain.
Hey, we can have our mayor step over here next to the flag. We will do your swearing in. All counselors that are being sworn in and mayor, if you can see me after the meeting, I need to. Know your rights, your student.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name. I shall thunder. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the United States, the State of Oregon, the State of Oregon, and the Charter of the City of Southern. And the Charter of the City of Southern.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
Of mayor.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So help me God. Thank you.
All right, now we have Lisa Woods and Debbie Hamilton to the front. We will. Don't look at me.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I is the words. I Debbie Hamilton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I would support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
On the Charter of the City of Southern.
On the Charter of the City of Southern.
All federal and state laws.
All federal and state laws.
And ordinances of the City of Southern.
And ordinances of the City of Southern.
That I will.
That I will.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of city councillor.
And city councillor.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So help me God.
So no help.
Put the moon pad over. I don't think it puts it there.
Oh, no, you're, yeah, it's right there in front. Just flip it over. There you go.
Oh, my God.
This is a resignation and declare a vacancy. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Diane Harris, City Recorder. As you know, Council-elect Tom Boggs resigned from his position last year. Therefore, he will not be accepting the position this year that he was elected in. Per our city charter, any vacancies. Upon, excuse me, filling the vacancies, upon declaring a vacancy of any city council position that occurs within six months of a council or mayoral election, the city council shall appoint the, to offer the appointment to the council or mayoral candidate. Excuse me, from the most recent election. So we have here, we need you to officially accept the resignation and declare the vacancy in one motion. The next motion would be first, you offer the position to Gary Dagel, who is our next highest vote getter. And then you make a motion to appoint if he does accept that. So we have two, two actions that we need to do on that.
Motion and a second in the discussion.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
And council. The other motion.
You need to see if he wants to. Ask him if he is interested in filling that position.
Mr. Dagel, are you interested in filling this position?
Yes, I am.
Okay. The other motion to appoint Barry Dagel. The city council has presented. Term ending December 31st, 2026.
I'll make the motion if I can read that.
As stated, you can say.
As stated, I will make the motion to.
Appoint.
To appoint Gary Dagel.
To appoint Gary Dagel.
To see.
To be the position of city council. As stated.
Oh, my goodness.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I will do a swearing in for you. Sorry, you sit in your seat. Okay, so I don't need to stand right over here.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Yeah, I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the City of Southern. All federal and state laws.
All federal and state laws.
And ordinances of the City of Southern. And that I will.
And I will.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
For calling the duty.
Of city councillor. During my continuance therein.
I don't know. Generally, I wouldn't give it to them.
I'd like to introduce my husband, Alan Woods, standing right here. And my son, Thomas, who are the youngest of three, the other of the two are not. And we've got friends in the south as well.
I can introduce my daughter and my granddaughter, my fiancee, and my extended.
A future councillor.
And my husband Larry is here.
Hi, Larry.
Yeah.
Thanks for everyone for coming and supporting. Okay, next is council president appointment. We have a motion to appoint a president. The council president.
I made the motion to appoint. There is nothing. He's bringing. Who will you? I don't think that.
One second. Any discussion?
Yes, she is.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Okay.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Dagel.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner. Motion carries. I was like, oh, was I not loud enough?
You do know that Larry is the current chair, so.
Very sure.
The current chair. Chair. I do.
I second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussions? Please, Larry, for part of the jury committee, term ending December 31st, 2024. The note.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have two appointments for finance committee council appointments. Who are the current ones?
So Tom Boggs was one of them, and Joe Grossman is also on that committee, those two. Do you want to hear my staff report?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. I would like, you know, I was ready. Mayor and council members, Tammy Trebridge, Finance Director, and I actually want to sell the position, okay? Because it might be hard to get volunteers, so just saying. That so there's two members to serve on, participate on the finance committee, and I have re-implemented a fairly regular term of meeting. It says bimonthly, and bimonthly can either mean twice a month or every two months, and I promise it's only every two months, not twice a month. And we go over budget reports, tax position, internal fiscal policies, debt payments, I've got an expanded debt schedule that's a little clearer and shows when different things pay off. Any recommendations by our auditor, any steps we've taken to address those things, we go over risk management, insurance, any adjustments that they'd like to see to monthly reports and new projects or items on the horizon. And hopefully, if you don't get volunteers, you'll just have to, they'll be voluntold, voluntold. Yes. We could do that.
No, the motions, we accept the two appointments to finance. Who are they? That would be Tom Boggs and Joe.
But you've got to get somebody to replace Tom.
Oh, he's not going to be all that.
No, because it has to be. Yeah.
And you have to get Ralph to read.
Re-up on it, I know.
Are you still interested?
He's official.
Yes.
How about Sean?
He's hiding.
Mr. Gary Drew, short straw.
Awesome.
What do we have? Are we?
Okay, so now I make motion that we approve. Lisa Woods and Joe Grossman for finance committee.
A motion in a second to appoint Lisa and Joe to finance committee, term ending December 31st, 2024. Any discussion?
And if we don't have something to discuss, we don't meet just to be meeting. Sometimes it's every three months. And it's like an hour? Yeah, maybe half an hour, and we try and schedule it, whatever's, you know, works for you.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On to TRC council representative appointment.
I can't, I'll make myself.
Do we have a current one? The motion.
The motion that we approved.
Second, to appoint Gary Dagel, TRC council representative, term ending December 31st, 2024. Any session?
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to the meeting committee board appointments and reappointments. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Diane Harris, City Recorder. We have several committees that have vacancies. And we received some applications, not enough to fill all of those vacancies. However, we're very pleased to get what we got. So on planning commission, there are four vacancies received, two applications, one from Norm Davidson and one from Tom Maloney. These terms will end on December 31st, 2026. We also have three vacancies on the Parks Advisory Committee. We did receive applications for reappointment from Adam Sarnoski and Linda Whitaker. Those terms will end in December of 2024. On the Budget Committee, we have four vacancies. We did receive applications for reappointment from Tom Maloney and Janine Hartley. And those that will, the terms will end on December 2025. And last but not least, we have Library Advisory Board. We have four vacancies on the library board. We did receive one application for reappointment from Carleen House. So we need motions to, for you to consider those applications and motions to fill those if you so desire, and if you need a little help on those motions, so I can repeat the names, I'm happy.
Is it one motion for all?
I have separate, if you all challenge to have one motion to fill all of that. More power to you, because a lot of. Do you want to do one motion? Yes.
I broke it all out, so it doesn't matter.
So to start with, for the budget committee, is Tom Maloney or Janine Hartley here? Right here, button?
Right?
Are you going to be separate or? Okay, well, let me ask. Is Norm Davidson here? About Alan Farnosky or Linda Whitaker? Carleen House. Carleen, if you'd like to come up and say anything, introduce yourself or back.
About a couple of words.
Okay.
I don't hold a reading that. I'd just like to say that I've been with the, since the beginning, when we reopened the library as the Southern Literature Library. And, you know, with your help, since she's really dedicated volunteer, this has been extremely successful. And we're hoping for an even greater future with your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I made a motion.
Reappointing Norm Davidson and Tom Maloney to the finance connection. And we're going to reappoint Al Shomosky and then we're going to reappoint Tom Maloney to the bike.
Good job.
Did I do that?
Yeah.
One second. Remake in a second and then the second.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to strategic plan update.
Hi, Mayor, Members of Council, Aaron Sloan. Last year, we touched on our. Tammy and I kind of brought it forward, but we modified that plan a little bit. We didn't really modify it, but we made it into a smaller piece than we had worked on it in, so big, there's so many streets and there's. You know, to try to figure out the funding for all of those and, and take it way out into the future is what's almost impossible to do, and so we, what we've done is we, we made it smaller to the same list. But we just kind of tripled from our top 10 worst streets, and we only look out seriously about two years on that, and that way we can we can kind of fit it in the budget and talk about it, and if something changes, if we want to what greatest street, because it makes sense economically, there's a development going on, he's moved that to the front of the line, or if the street deteriorates at a faster rate than we had it in the list before, we can move it up, and it's just, and it's working pretty good for us. This last year, we, we did our central repairs, we did Everett and State rebuild. And still in this fiscal to come is our terrorist overlay and inlay project, and that will happen before June 30th, before we move into that next fiscal year. And so, you know, next year, we have a little list and, and and as we get closer to July 1, or even when we're looking, when we're talking about the budget, we'll probably plug these, some of these other streets in, we're looking next year. You know, one of the third avenues from Montaquada to Matilla. North Road Lane is another one to grind in inlay, and there's just, there's a lot of them, so. But that's our update, but we've kind of broken this thing into some smaller bites that we can move through. Without having this colossus. Maple Street is, it's a city street sort of, but it's kind of a private road as well, and that's why it falls into that odd. We're looking at ways to try to get that paved, whether it's in the parks or looking in the streets and, or maybe even trying to pave ourselves. We're looking at a lot of different options from Maple. It's not a very big street, but it is, it is rough. We tried to go in and kind of gravel it, and that worked for a while, but that blew out, so we're we're looking at that real hard. We know that it needs attention.
It does get used a lot, and it takes a lot, but people are coming up, I've got it too. They'll stop their judge both.
We're going to join the pothole up each side. That's why we gravel. Well, you can say it's not public street, but it's private. Well, there's a home up there, and until the dog park was there, it didn't get used as the park road at all. There wasn't really a reason for people to drive up there. It was mainly kind of a private drive, and now that the dog park's there, it it does get a lot more obviously, the majority of the traffic is public, but. I think it's, I think it's platted. I think it is a public street, but it's just one of those that was never brought up to standard. There's no curbs, gutters, nothing. It was just, they threw some pavement down on it, and it's, it's been unimproved, and so it's on the list. It's just that it's not a huge, it hasn't been a huge priority, because in the past, it hasn't gotten a lot of traffic. Our main city streets, we, we want to fix and, and, but we realize that that one's gotten to a point. We're going to try to get some pavement now on it here. It's next, probably it's next fiscal year, so.
Thank you. City manager report.
Just one quick, we're not going to do an executive session tonight after meeting with the mayor. You lay out my work goals for going into the next year, and I want to take time to go through all of that material that I have and present to you at the next council meeting, what I thought you said were my priority goals. In the meantime, though, between now, please, if you've got something you think you don't want, Jerry, I think this ought to go on the list, or a performance measurement for you, just send me an email. Joe did that last year over an item that got put on the list, so I welcome that, so you're my boss.
I didn't fill any of those out, because we did it as a group, and you had said you were going to do that again, and so I didn't fill it.
That's fine, we'll do it. The next council meeting, we're going to go on executive session, and it's going to be, you know, as hard as it is for me to do, to be quiet and listen.
There's a goal setting session for, for council and the city manager to know what the goals are for that, when, when we're about to.
Two, and that's a very good question. So this is your goals for my performance. The following, we're going to go over the strategic plan. We're going to set up a workshop and go over the, discuss the strategic plan and make sure you're all on board with it. And the strategic plan goals and objectives and work tasks. Yes, probably the second meeting, probably sometime the fourth week in February or the second week in March somewhere, but we wanted to start on that. We just tell, it's been 10 years, the strategic plan is, but we get, you know, there's a 10-step process for doing it, and we're just going to start at step one and work all the way through it as a council and certain staff.
I take council comments. Remember, monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside its needs. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley.
I want to congratulate Counsel Woods for being up here and actually Dagel for making a push come back.
Counsel Grossman.
Yes, I would like to second that for the new councilmen that are sitting up with us. I'd like to acknowledge the attendees and special acknowledgement for the people under 21. Those special people who get involved with government and, and volunteers and things, it really follows through the rest of your life, and so I have a sign up sheet that I won't let you. Well, they're actually more mature than you. Thank all of you.
First, I want to say tonight is August 10.
Friends, I want to say today is Officer Appreciation Day. So I noted that on Facebook this morning. I wanted to say happy new year to everybody, and I'm looking forward to seeing another successful moving forward.
Council Woods.
I just want to say I'm looking forward to serving the public and working with the people. And I'm just putting a guess put forward that thank you.
Council Dagel.
Well, I want to say, you know, we have really special people, we, I mean, Joe and Larry are really good examples of this. You know, we've got some, all of the people we need to tap into in this community. And the more community involvement, it's what hurts better for them. But I don't think it's been on my mind, it's the downtown development, and I'd like to see that a month or longer ago. My thought was, maybe we could get some of those people going in with their friends, but.
And you're going to see it, too.
One kind of two councilmen are real serious, and they can even be passionate with all of us. We all get along. I don't think we had this last year in one loud problem between councillors, and we tease. We acknowledge the city manager, and we all get along so much fun, even though we accomplished what we needed to accomplish. In case you think we're
I would welcome a newest member of council. And our return member.
Back from the dead.
And I also want to you stole my number a little bit on the officer appreciation, so thanks for everything I do. That was all I had as well, so I appreciate it. The end of reading.
Larry was first, wasn't he?
Public comment. The purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. Okay, then this meeting is over.
Okay. Said yes.
Are you sure you want to stop recording?
Okay.
Yeah, so it should be ending.